Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Cloverdale City Council meeting. We'll reconvene at 6:02. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep. Good. All right, roll call. Call will... Everyone is present? I got you. If you need a new microphone, let us know. Any conflict of interest declarations? Seeing none? There is no report out. Unclosed session. Any changes or deletions to the agenda? Kevin?
Yes, Mayor, we'd like to move item J1 under New Business to right after the proclamation.
Thank you. Any problems with that from anyone? Great. All right, we'll move on to B, Public Comment. Any person wishing to speak on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. If you would like to come forward, first persons, please state your name.
I'm Richard Green. Short and sweet tonight, I just want to come to you as a member of the sons and daughters of the Pearl Harbor Survivors Organization. Tonight, I want to bring to you an opportunity to show the flag at City Hall, to display this flag at City Hall during December. It'll be a commemorative flag. Commemorates the the organization that is supporting the memory of Pearl Harbor. And I'm asking the city to put this on the agenda so that we can fly it in December and be proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh. Viva la comunidad sana y viva la laza.
Would anyone else like to speak for public comment? Items not listed on the open session. Please come forward.
Hi, good evening. My name's Jeff Schreiber. I'm a fairly new resident of Cloverdale. I just got here in October of last year. It's a pretty nice city, like living here. Everybody's pretty quiet and calm. I have one minor suggestion, and that would be, is it possible we can purchase some of those green wire... I call them like wire wicker basket type trash cans that you see up and down Cloverdale? And place them on North Cloverdale Boulevard, maybe quarter mile north, quarter mile south of the high school? Because I do a lot of construction for people around town, and I noticed a lot of litter, so I don't know if it would encourage people to throw stuff in the trash cans, and I know it would require probably service from Public Works or something like that out of your budget. But it's just a thought, so if you guys could like mull it over and think about it. I notice like if the police or whoever's patrolling the area, you'll notice that, you'll notice the trash kind of in the bushes and things like that, so that's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Anyone else with a comment? Items not on the open session. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I could... Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to ask that those two items, the flying of the Pearl Harbor commemorative flag and the trash can be put on the Public Works Subcommittee Agenda item for next week so that we can discuss those. Okay? Thank you.
Actually, by May through the chair, I'd like to see the commemorative flag issue come back to Finance, Admin, and Police.
Whatever perspective Subcommittee is, they're appropriate. I agree. Thank you. All right, moving on. Seeing no more comment, closed public comment. Move on to Communications. You written Communications?
No Communications received.
Thank you. Next is the Oath of Office for our Student Liaison. We have a new student liaison coming in. Her name is Yara Gallego Morales.
Yeah, just real quick, Mr. Mayor. Yara is a junior at Cloverdale High, and she's interested in abdicating for her school and her community, and she came into City Hall and we had a nice meeting with her and kind of give her some of the expectations and let her know what her role would be, and we really look forward to having you, so.
All right, welcome.
If you can please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I... State your name.
I, Yara Gallego.
Do solemnly affirm?
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend?
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully discharge?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
Duties upon which?
The duties upon which I...
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter. Thank you.
All right. Welcome to the scariest place in Cloverdale. All right, we're going to skip forward to J. J1 under New Business, an At-Will Employment Agreement with... Oh, you have a report? You brought one with you. I love it. Give you a second then.
Um, hello again. My name is Yara Gallego, and this is my report for the... all the schools that we have in Cloverdale. So far into the school year, the high school has football, the girls volleyball, and cross-country participating and playing for our fall season. And now that we are getting closer to the winter, we will be having the boys and girls basketball and soccer team starting their winter season. Also, the high school has been able to bring many wonderful guest speakers to talk to students about their careers, so students are get insight into what career they want to go in, or have an idea of what to expect joining the field, the field of work of their choice. More recently, we had a homecoming on September 30th from 7:30 to 10:00 p.m., in which everyone had an amazing time. But not only did we have homecoming, we also had the Harvest Festival, where Kiwanis, Key Clubbers, and the Builders Club helped in serving food to families that were enjoying looking around at other stands. For the same week on Friday, Jefferson students were able to cash in their eaglet wings for different rewards like extra recess, talk room with the principal, or being on the Wall of Fame during their lunch outside on the playground. Last week, the PTA did an art reflection contest on giving a reason why you are hopeful, and the Jefferson did their walk-in roll where over 200-plus students, staff, and families joined them. Another thing that Jefferson did is that today, the first-grade teachers taught a special to the first graders who would rotate into different classes every week to learn either Spanish-themed music or art with the amazing first-grade teachers, like Ms. Santa Maria, who teaches the students Spanish. The Washington School recently welcomed Mr. Barry this year, who used to teach at the high school, but now is their vice principal, and yesterday they had their picture retake. Lastly, the Jefferson and Washington are now providing school bus transportation that will take students to either school instead of just taking Jefferson students to their schools.
Great job. Thank you. Any questions from council? Any comments anyone wants to make? Seeing none? All right, seeing none, we are going to actually go into Proclamations for F1 Water Professionals Week. Is there anyone that would like to read this?
A proclamation on the City Council of the City of Cloverdale declaring October 7 through 15, 2023, Water Professionals Appreciation Week in Cloverdale. Whereas Cloverdale Water Professionals are responsible for the production and distribution of drinking water to more than 3,600 locations in the City of Cloverdale and are responsible for the collection of wastewater produces in... wastewater produces in the city of Cloverdale. And whereas Cloverdale Water Professionals operate seven wells producing 410 to 420 million gallons of drinking water annually that is distributed by two pump stations, providing 11 different storage tanks with drinking water. And whereas Cloverdale Water Professionals are responsible for the collection and treatment of 200 to 220 million gallons of wastewater delivered by the more than 33 miles of sewer mains in the City of Cloverdale. And whereas the dedicated team of two water operators and two wastewater operators monitor all treatment facilities, systems seven days a week. And whereas providing drinking water and wastewater services is of the utmost importance in a thriving community. And whereas we thank the devoted water professionals in Cloverdale for their continued service to our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the City Council of the City of Cloverdale designates October 7 through the 15th, 2023, as Water Professionals Appreciation Week, dated October 11, 2023, so ordered by Mayor Todd Land.
Comments?
Yeah, we have a lot to get through tonight, so I'm just gonna make it quick. I just want to acknowledge the teams at wastewater and our drinking water, and I'm so glad there's an annual resolution to honor you guys because, you know, we take you for granted. That's just the fact. When that water comes out of the tap and that stuff that leaves the house that we don't want to ever see again leaves the house, and we don't have to think about it, that means you're doing your job. So we really appreciate all that you do, all your hard work, your dedication, and I look forward to doing this once a year, and then every time I see you guys wave and say thank you again.
Anyone else?
Just did them. Perfect.
Yeah, three things are taken for granted for sure: electricity, water, and wastewater. And to have four people that supply an entire city with these services is... It's amazing, and it's unheard of, and we can't thank them enough. It's been perfect for a long time, and you know, we are very lucky to be blessed with the people that we have. So I know you're not the most talkative, and I'm not going to ask you to. I'm going to ask someone else to speak on your behalf.
Exactly. Yeah, today we have Darren Hernandez and John Robinson, Water Professionals, our two senior water operators. Being in their positions is not just a job, it's affected their life in every aspect. They're on-call all the time. And and their kind of world revolves around, you know, this industry and everything, and they're very meticulous in everything they do. I've came to the city just recently, and they've helped me out immensely with their historical knowledge of the system and their caring and all their planning that goes into their everyday jobs. So I do appreciate them very much, and, you know, the city, I don't think everyone realizes like how amazing these guys are in their job every day to have someone just this devoted to what they do.
In the sacrifices they make, those two, just talking about the water guys, I know they're very close friends, and they're not allowed to do things together because they can't both be gone at the same time. You're devoted your entire life to your city, and these four guys do it, so thank you again. I am going to ask you guys to take a picture of those. Are you all right with that? It's been since high school. All right, moving forward to J1, an At-Will Employment Agreement with Christopher Parker for the City of Cloverdale's Police Chief position. Chief?
Thank you. I'm honored to have this one. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Let me first start by saying thank you for moving this item up on the agenda. As you can see, we have several members of the department here in support of Chris, so we really thank you that you were able to move that up so they could be here. Before you tonight is a staff report requesting council to adopt a resolution approving an at-will agreement with Chris Parker as the new police chief. I don't think it's any new news or anything. You're all aware that I'm retiring on December 15th. That's created a vacancy at the Police Department. The city initiated a promotional recruitment process for a new chief, and Chris Parker was selected to fill the position. The city attorney has prepared and negotiated an at-will agreement with Chris, which is before you tonight, and there are key points that he would like to discuss on that contract, but if you don't mind, I'd like to just say a few words about Chris before we go to that. That too, a little bit. So I think it's pretty well-known here by the looks of the staff and everybody here. Chris is well-known in the community, well-respected within the organization. He's one of the hardest workers that I know and that I've ever worked with. There's nothing that he hasn't confronted or been confronted with that he's not prepared for as the chief of police. He's an extremely hard worker, has an impeccable attendance record. And as I mentioned, he's not only respected by his peers, but also the community, which makes him the ideal candidate to assume the role as a police chief, and I've been honored to work with him. And if it wasn't for him and his perseverance, I may not have even tested for this position, so I certainly owe him for that. So at this point, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jose to discuss those key points.
And, Mayor, members of the council, so just before I get started in reading some of the major deal points as required by law, this is a resolution. The resolution is for the approval of the agreement. What the agreement? The agreement is an at-will employment agreement with Christopher Parker for the position of police chief. There is the commencement date is December 15th, 2023. Salary is step four of the adopted police chief salary schedule, which is $174,515.48. The agreement also has, which is very typical severance, three-month severance in case of termination. There's, of course, vacation leave, that's very common in all agreements, vacation sellback, there's sick leave. There's also compensation for unused sick leave and administrative leave. Regarding mobile device stipend, it's $50 a month, which is consistent with your other agreements. Regarding vehicle allowance, the city will actually be furnishing the city vehicle to the employee, to the chief due to the position, if the agreement is approved. And of course, there's, again, typical in these types of agreements, a uniform allowance, and there's also an amount budgeted for professional development. Again, this is a resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chief. Comments or questions from council?
A comment.
Okay. Seeing none, I'll open it up to public comment. Would anyone like to make any public comments at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Does anyone want to read a resolution?
I recommend the resolution by title only, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving an at-will employment agreement with Christopher Parker as Cloverdale Police Chief and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have a first and second. Would you like me to go around? That mic's not working again. Councilmember Morgan Sturden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And myself as an "I," so passes five zero. I'd like to introduce our new chief of police, Chris Parker.
Bring you better. What do I say? You don't know about my father passed away a couple months ago. Before he passed away, I told him this was coming up. He was proud of me. Chief said, "I work hard for the citizens, for my extended family pretty much, you know, the employees." I couldn't do anything without my beautiful wife, my kids, who are here. Deeply honored. I will not fail you or the community. Again, I'm a part of the community. I coach the seventh and eighth graders in football. I enjoy doing that. And I know this, but when we put on the national lineout, it's not just for the community, it's for our employees. They get together, they love doing it, and it builds a great camaraderie with us. We have a rib off. And I try to approach everything like that because it takes everybody in this room for us to do our job. They have to trust us. We're invited into their homes. You know, we're dealing with their kids when they're at school, they're away. And so we have to build that trust and hold on to that trust. Yeah, there's some bagged actors in the U.S. and guys that I work for and gals from the, you know, from Teresa to the dispatchers, to the officers, to Linda. And I have to mention Rudy because he told me I had to. They're just a great group of people. I trust them with my life, my family. Ninety-five percent of us live in the City of Cloverdale. And I just, you know, I take this position very seriously. I have a great mentor in Jason Ferguson, Chief Stewart, who is here as an interim, who I've known for years. And I don't... I'm honored. I don't know what else I could say. I appreciate it. I look forward to meeting with you guys. And like I said, it takes you folks, it takes City Hall, Police Department, the community, to make us, to do what we are able to do. So it's a team effort, it's like, you know.
Well, Chris, you know, I just wanted to say, I know you're going to do a wonderful job in your new position as chief. You've got a wonderful crew. Chief Ferguson has done an excellent job with the department compared to where it was when he first came to the city. Now, the one thing I want to make sure that Chief Ferguson told you is I get to drive one of those police cars. He did, actually. The little trawger. He's let me do that a couple of times. That, that practice will continue. So thank you.
Drives it like this. I've, I've known, I've had the pleasure of knowing you for about 20 years now. When you were at Katati, former employment, we were at different places and worked together. Cloverdale is very lucky to get you when you came. And seeing the staff that asked us to move this so they could be here to support you speaks volumes to me and to everyone up here. So, thank you guys for supporting the chief. Thank you for being here to support him. And thank you for everything. Anyone else?
Chris, congratulations and I look forward to working with you and seeing you up here and getting through these brutal meetings. But I have one thing to say. I got an official, official, we're going to come in and just hammer you on the rib competition next year. So it's on, brother.
Bring it, bring it.
Chris, I just want to say congratulations and may the force be with you.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
I wanted to say congratulations and welcome to your new post.
Thank you, Marjorie. Councilmember. Appreciate it. I remember when you were in the, when you first started and you came up to the police department. And we were asking you, well, the officers were scared to ask you questions because you were running for council. And I'd say, well, let me ask her a question. So I started firing away and she's nailing them. So. But I remember you. But again, thank you, Jose. Looking forward to working with you. Kevin, always a pleasure. And the, the hard, I would say the hardest working employee in Cloverdale is David Kelly by far. So, thank you and thanks to David and the staff. Susie?
Right. Some quick pictures, family, coworkers, city council. Do you mind?
Sure.
I'm sure your family's dying.
Oh, God.
Easily go over the head.
Oh, it's so slow.
Are we ready for G1?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to G, presentations. G1, update on the active transportation plan being led by Sonoma County Transportation Authority, or SCTA.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. SCTA, Sonoma County Transportation Authority is in the process of updating their active, their active transportation plan. We did have some correspondence with them several months ago where they had asked us, they had presented some trails that were presented for town. And I know they're going to go over that a little bit in this presentation. And we added a couple and they were nice enough to keep those in. So I'm not going to go over everything because it's a, we have a pretty good presentation here. But we do have Dana Turley, who's a senior transportation planner at SCTA. And Taylor McAdam from Farron Peers, who's the traffic consultant that is working with SCTA. So Taylor, I think you're the main presenter. So you can, we'll put it up on the screen and you can get going as soon as, as soon as you're ready.
Okay, so I, do I share my screen or you're going to share it?
Your screen, Taylor.
Sure, sure. No problem. Okay. Can you see that? Okay, awesome. Well, thanks for having us tonight. And I was really excited to hear Yada mention the walk and roll to school day that ties in here. So that was a great kind of preview. But tonight, we wanted to present, tell you a little bit about what this project is all about and tell you about kind of next steps of how you can get involved. You both as the council and community members there listening tonight. So first off, what is an active transportation plan? It really refers to, we're making a plan for any human-powered mode of transportation. You know, the most classic examples, walking, biking, but this also includes using a mobility device. Anyone kind of pushing a stroller. And also kind of newer forms of mobility, like electric bikes and scooters. And the ATP, the, the plan is really intended to place an increased focus on these modes and plan for both infrastructure projects and kind of supportive programs and policies. And creating a plan not only helps, you know, identify the priorities for Cloverdale, but also kind of sets you up to be eligible to apply for funding to implement these types of programs. And when we think about putting this plan in place, it's really an all-ages and abilities plan. The chart here, this is research that was conducted out of Portland State. Kind of surveyed a huge, a huge group asking, you know, what's your relationship to bicycling? And there's 1% that's kind of strong and fearless. This is your kind of, you know, spandex cyclists. There's a 7% or so that are enthusiastic and confident, maybe use biking more for transportation. The biggest group though, is this group that is interested but concerned. And that is the target audience really for, for this planning effort. We know we're going to hear from the 1% and the 7%, but we also want to hear from the 60% of people who for safety reasons or comfort, or they don't have access to a bicycle or a good place to park a bicycle. That's who we want to hear from to make this plan work for as many people as possible. This, this graphic is talking about biking, but the same is actually true for walking. There are, you know, just kind of small reasons that people choose not to walk or that's not an option for them. And we want to try to address some of that low-hanging fruit as well as some of the bigger challenges. This plan will, you know, incorporate industry best practices in a few different areas. And I just wanted to give some visuals about what we're talking about. This is about on-street bikeways and design as well as off-street kind of multi-use paths. And, and sometimes they're called bike highways, but you know, places where bikes and pedestrians can, can move together. We will talk about intersection design and treatments. We will also talk about kind of these emerging mobility solutions like scooters. Where do they belong on the roadway? Where do they, where should they be parked? You know? Even if it's not a public shared system of micro-mobility, private individuals can, can own these devices now too. And how, how do we want to accommodate them in the road? Quick build projects refers to, you know, there's going to be so many good ideas that come out of this plan. And we won't have the funding to implement all of them all out immediately. But there's some maybe we could implement sort of in a temporary way with paint or planters or kind of temporary ballards. And that is a growing trend in planning to, to do it 75% of the way there before you can get all the funding. Because you can still do it in a safe way that abides by codes and why not, why not go for it? And then the last is all the amenities that support walking and biking and scootering and rolling. So that's bike parking. I kind of already mentioned that one. But, you know, all transit users are also pedestrians for part of their journey. And so transit facilities with shade and trash cans also mentioned earlier tonight. You know, shade structures or shade trees, lighting, et cetera. So all these amenities that kind of support the experience. Bicycle facilities, just the ones that are kind of highlighted in this dotted box are going to be the focus of this plan. And so separated bicycle lanes, separated by protection. Off-street separated or buffered at least with distance and paint. We want to try to move away from, you know, kind of on-street, just a single lane right next to cars and painted. You know, they're called sherros, the class three bicycle route. And there's, this doesn't mean there isn't a place for them ever, but those are not facilities that are comfortable for all ages and abilities. So we're going to try to focus on the most comfortable facilities. And then for pedestrian, the pedestrian kind of toolbox we'll look at here. Sidewalks, crosswalks, we're all familiar with, but we're going to also think about some of the designs and devices that have proven safety records and can enhance the kind of comfort level and quality of life for, for pedestrians as well. I know you have a few of these projects underway on Cloverdale Boulevard. So maybe not so needed to everyone. And then this, this project has a huge community engagement component, which is underway now. And we'll be doing both in-person engagement as well as we have an online survey, which I'll talk about a little later. But, you know, we can, we know what the data says about what the conditions are on the roadway. But that is not as useful as hearing from real people about their experiences on the roadway and what they'd like to see done differently. So the last piece is that once we identify kind of projects and programs, we'd like to implement a big component of this. This work is to prioritize amongst that list and then identify funding and a kind of pretty clear implementation path forward for those projects. One thing I wanted to share tonight to, to get kind of your wheels turned in and see if you have any reactions is we have a draft vision statement for the countywide plan. But for Cloverdale's plan, actually, I'm going to pause for a second. I don't think I explained this. We are developing both the countywide plan and then Cloverdale will have its own plan, which will be a chapter of the plan, but it will be a full plan for Cloverdale as well. So this is the countywide draft vision statement. Cloverdale could adopt the same statement or if something didn't, doesn't quite ring true for Cloverdale, you could adjust it. So I'll just leave it here for a couple of seconds for you to read. And then the second piece of the, kind of the vision is the, the goals and the, then kind of the descriptions of these goals. And there are three main goals. The first is connect, to be connected and to provide a connected and reliable network. The second is to provide a safe and well-maintained network. And the third is to provide a system that's community-oriented and place-based. So yeah, can include some components that are very unique to Cloverdale and kind of invite, invite the community to use them. And again, these are components where you could adopt what kind of the county's draft is or suggest tweaks if you think Cloverdale has something particular to, to contribute. And tonight's meeting is one within kind of the broader community and stakeholder engagement schedule. We are meeting with local bodies that were kind of set up just for this, commissions or councils to, to share about the plan. And we're going to meet with you all three times throughout the process. So tonight is the first of those meetings. The, tonight, we're going to, we're talking a little bit about the existing conditions, needs and opportunities. We have community engagement that was begun in September and will last through the better part of November. And then we'll come back kind of at the same timeframe for both the milestone update to your council as well as more community outreach next spring and early summer when we have a draft list, list of projects and programs. And then finally, towards the end of next year, calendar year, we'll have a public draft plan that we will invite everyone to take a look at and comment on. And just kind of a more visual version of the schedule. We are, yeah, right at the beginning of our very long community engagement, kind of an advisory committee involvement process. When I, I'm showing here that we've completed kind of establishing the foundation. And really that means collecting data about all the roads and facilities in the county and different programs. We're continuing to do that through community engagement, but we at least got the, the data part. And now we're working with community members to verify that. The technical analysis is based on the data, like what, what does that tell us about the roads? But this doesn't mean that we won't be revising our technical analysis based on what we hear from the community. But we have had the opportunity to kind of do some data analysis, which I'll share a bit in a minute. And then as I mentioned, kind of it's really starting next year that we'll be working on the, the project and program list. So a few kind of initial maps here, which I'd love any initial thoughts on. These are also the types of maps that folks will be able to comment on in the engagement process. But this first one, just looking at the existing and planned facilities in Cloverdale. And the, when I say planned, these were part of the plan that was last put out in 2014 for the countywide bicycle plan. And so any solid line is existing and a dashed line is proposed. Most of the facilities in Cloverdale today are class two and three. And some of them are newer facilities, but these are facilities that generally feel less comfortable to kind of all ages and abilities. And so we are definitely looking to see where we can add some class four or even off-street opportunities. Last year, I had the opportunity to work with a number of you. And I presented on our, the complete street safety assessment that we did that looked at Osti and Citrus Fair, Cloverdale Boulevard and Crocker Road and First, East First Street. And so those could be areas of focus, but they are not the only areas of focus. Um and so those could be areas of focus, but they are not the only areas of focus, I'm sure, for Cloverdale. This map here shows the preliminary level of traffic stress, LTS, results. And this is a, a scoring based on kind of raw data inputs on how comfortable it is to ride a bicycle or walk on these, this street. Uh so one and two are the most comfortable, three and then four is the most uncomfortable. Um and so most local streets are going to be a one. Um there's a couple kind of uh collector streets that are, are twos. And then there's only really the kind of highest trafficked um boulevards. Uh Cloverdale Boulevard and then uh Crocker. You know, this is one that through the data showed up as a two, but we knew from the complete street safety assessment that there's speeding on that road, and so that bumped it up to a three. But again, this is what the data tells us, but we are interested in kind of lived experience as to whether this checks out. Uh and then the last map I'll show here is just a first cut. So the preliminary, uh this is not an existing condition, but maybe a suggestion to help prioritize projects in the future. Um this, these priority zones were basically identified based on where density of commercial or residential overlaps with a, a school, library or um smart train zone, futures, future smart train zone. And so you'll see that there are some schools that uh that don't have the, the, the blue pedestrian zone, and that's because there isn't enough um residential or commercial density near them. And we imagine that you may want to add those, the zone, the school kind of quarter-mile buffers to this map, but we just wanted to use a kind of, at the first cut, a consistent approach across the whole county. Um and this would be where you might prioritize some of those pedestrian designs and elements that I showed earlier. So these are kind of just some things to initially react to. Again, we'll be coming in person um to hope, maybe we haven't decided the event for Cloverdale this fall yet, but it could be uh like at a grocery store or, you know, um a farmer's market or, or something. And then uh next spring is when we will really come do um some, some bigger events. And we also have a, a project website and survey that has a web map where you can go, kind of put a lot of location-specific comments as well as ideas about programs in the county or specifically in Cloverdale. But if you work, work somewhere else in the county, maybe you have comments there too. So that's what I've got tonight. I tried to get through that quickly, but I'm happy to go back to any other slides and take questions.
Thank you, Taylor. Well done. Let's go around the council. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I will open it up to the public. Does anyone have any public comment regarding this presentation? See one coming down now. Please state your name.
Hi, council. Uh my name is Erin Gore. I'm a local employer in town, and I'm really excited about this project. I have employees who bike to work, and it's dangerous through parts of Cloverdale right now. So I think this is going to be tremendous for my employee base, quality of life, health, safety. And I think it's going to tie really beautifully to the next presentation you're going to see. So I look forward to supporting this, and I hope you all take it seriously, because I think it could be really incredible for us in Cloverdale.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Any other questions or comments?
Um the, our community development director, what kind of direction are you looking for from us tonight, Kevin?
Well, I think this was part of their community outreach obligations for the project. Um if you would like, if the council, we, we could take this to Planning Commission um to do a, a deeper dive. They might have, you know, more time and interest. It is also um important to have this planned because for a couple of things. Uh one, for going after grants, if we have an adopted active transportation plan, we can point to that, that this, these projects have been identified and evaluated. And for two, for conditioning future projects where some of these trails or, or sidewalks or features may be incorporated in this plan, we can use that to condition projects to help install those um, those improvements, so.
Yeah, I'm glad you, you brought that up, because I think what we're, you know, finding across the county and especially at Smart, where the, where the multimodal trail is concerned is that we're actually, you know, funded from Windsor to Pengrove on the multimodal trail. But right now, um construction costs are really going through the roof. And so we're having to do a little bit of uh shuffling. So I mean, what I'm really coming to realize is that, you know, um agencies can't alone a, a, address the uh retroactive nature of bike paths and, and making it, uh making existing kind of uh sprawl development. Not that Cloverdale is that big, but I'm kind of drawing it, drawing the, the larger county into, into my comments is that it's harder to retrofit it than to get it right the first time. And I really see this plan as a way for Cloverdale to get in front of the, the issue of bicycle and, and pedestrian-friendly communities before the developments come in. So I think it's a, a really good opportunity for us to, to participate. Um I also think it dovetails really nicely with our, our uh next presentation, which is about um, um public health and community, community health and wellness. I mean, what we're seeing post-pandemic is such an interest in um bikable, walkable communities and really, you know, safe corridors for kids to get to school and for employees to, to get to work, even in, in a small city like ours. I also see as being really instrumental in our, kind of our, our aspirational um uh dreams for a ridge-to-river park vision. And the thing that's going to tie that together, the ridge and the river, is biking and walking. So I think it's just a, it's really wonderful time. It's also just um a great time for us, you know, as we're, we're coming out of COVID, to do some community outreach on these, um, the, these kinds of um community questions. So um that's my feedback and direction to staff. I think we should um definitely be part of this conversation, continue community outreach and, you know, really get in front of some of these issues and um, you know, you, use it um advantageously with the uh, the parks, the aspirational parks projects that we, we've got going as well, so.
One last comment real quick. We are also updating our circulation element, which is part of the general plan that looks at how, you know, cars and people and everyone moves through the city. So in the, in the next come, in next year, we're going to have a lot of transportation-related uh items before the Planning Commission and ultimately onto the council for approval and consideration. So we're gonna have a lot in that area.
That's really good timing then. Thank you, Kevin.
I'm good. Thank you. Uh the, the one thing I would like, slide twenty. I would like to have the Washington School area included. I don't think we need a quarter-mile buffer, because that would take over the rest of the city. But however, uh it would be nice to know that with the, the private street of Citrus Fair Drive, the new streets proposed to go in through, with the Washington Street, that we're covering all of that area, because there is a, a lot of housing and, and people live in that area. Other direction from anyone? Kevin, is that clear enough?
Yes, thank you.
How about the idea for Planning Commission like you brought up?
That's the natural um progression of things is that, especially since they're hitting the circulation element, that'll be a very placed, it's kind of convenient. But I'd also like to see some community outreach and community meetings as well.
You think it's too premature for the Planning Commission at this point? You're off right now.
Um I don't think it is, because this is really the first um, this is the first rollout for all of the jurisdictions. And so um we might as well get them up, up and running as well. I think al- almost all of the other cities are kind of in the same timeframe. Well, we might be one of the first cities that's, that's getting started on this.
In some of the other cities, they started this presentation at the Planning Commission, but we elected to bring it to the council, so.
But I, yeah, I think that it's a, it's a great thing for the community and for the council to be aware of, but I think that this is something that Planning Commission can definitely sink their teeth into.
Yada, do you have any comments or questions or anything regarding this topic?
Not really. Um I'm just, uh, I'm just happy that the community, the, like the councils are trying to better the, like, schools and the water system because of the fact that water is essential to every, everyday thing, general, just living, so.
Clear direction? Thank you. All right. Move on to G2. Presentation from the collective of organizations, including the Healthcare Foundation of Northern Sonoma County, New Western Community Dad, La Familia Sana, Alexander Valley Healthcare, and On the Margins regarding New Western Community Dad Sana, Our Healthy Community Project.
Mayor, I, I know that this group has been uh surveying the community for a while, since I think March of last year. Uh this is their opportunity to present the results. Um and I think uh it's regarding the establishment of a wellness center in Cloverdale. Uh I'm not as sure at all the presenters, so maybe you, you can just uh introduce yourself and uh we'll get you going on your presentation.
Yes, ooh. Uh my name is Jade Waymoth, and I'm the executive director of La Familia Sana.
My name is Alma Bowen, the founder and executive director of Nuestra Comunidad.
Kirsten Tej is director of development at Alexander Valley Healthcare.
I am Dani Dominguez. I'm the founder and CEO of On the Margins.
Hi, I'm Kim Bender, executive director of the Healthcare Foundation, Northern Sonoma County.
Thank you. So hi, all. Most of you know me as Cecilia's mom. She already left for her walk. I'm wearing my other hat today as the executive director at La Familia Sana um and a community member of Cloverdale. I've lived here for almost ten years now. Um and before becoming a mom, I did a lot of activities outside of Cloverdale. I, I did hot yoga, I did some art programs, took a knitting class. And now, oh, a hiking group as well. That was fun. And now as a single mom, I work full-time. And I'm starting to wonder where I can do these things with my own child here at Cloverdale. And specifically, that have childcare options that fits my work schedule. That is a bilingual and bicultural space, um that's intergenerational. So it serves youth, families and our seniors. And I really started to wonder, where do our monolingual Spanish speakers go? Specifically, our seniors and our families as well. And where do they go to receive high-quality programming for theirs, for their families? So parent support groups with childcare, maybe an exercise class or a cooking class. Um and this really had us all start to wonder, where and when do intergenerational families gather to experience joy and a sense of belonging here in Cloverdale? So, you know, we talked, we talked about the usual suspects in our town um that have space, but none of them quite fit the vision that we were looking at for supporting our families and, and our bilingual families and our seniors. So we continued to ask each other and ourselves. Um and then we asked the Healthcare Foundation to come in and support the work.
Thank you, Jade. Um as I said, my name is Kim Bender, executive director of the Healthcare Foundation. And the Healthcare Foundation, Northern Sonoma County's mission is to connect people and resources to promote wellness in underserved communities with a vision of eliminating health inequities in Northern Sonoma County. Our service area spans from Santa Rosa up to Cloverdale. We've been around for about twenty-two years. We started out, in case anybody doesn't know us, as the um organization to support the Healdsburg Hospital. However, over the many years, we've evolved to address specific issues um specifically around access to healthcare and mental health services. We support dozens of local nonprofits and individuals, including all the presenters that you just met. We want to thank the North Sonoma County Healthcare District, who is supporting this project, um which is rooted in an overwhelming amount of evidence that creating a sense of belonging in a community not only has health, physical and mental health benefits, but it actually prolongs life. Our purpose today is to share with you the vision that has been developed by the project now known as Nuestra Comunidad Sana, or Our Healthy Community. Our ask today is just to listen, hear what the community has uh developed and the vision that has been created, and to consider how any existing resources that you might have in Cloverdale can create a sense of belonging for all residents. Thank you.
Slide please. Thank you. So we were, you know, able to, just like we heard today from, from some of the folks who presented, how safe and, and beautiful this community is, right? But we want to ask you the same question that we asked them. Where do you go, where do intergenerational families go to experience joy, safety and a space of belonging? So if you live in Cloverdale, which I know you do, where do you go? That's the question that we asked several communities. And again, we started March twenty-twenty-two. And the objective of Nuestra Comunidad Sana, or Our Healthy Community, is to use a grassroots approach. So this is a community-based project. I'm an associate professor at the University of San Francisco, but I've also been, and my organization, On the Margins, has been here in Cloverdale for the past two years, supporting individuals, couples, families with counseling services. So we understand the local community, and we understood that for this research to be truly powerful, it needed to be grassroots. It needed to be from the community up. And so we used a grassroots approach led by Cloverdale community members. So this is a local community, making decisions about their families, their loved ones, with particular attention to historically underserved and marginalized communities to envision a safe, vibrant community of belonging. And so if we can go to the next slide, I'm going to tell you a little bit about how we went about collecting the data. So this was truly a labor of, of love, a labor of taking a backseat approach and letting the community tell us their vision. So we conducted collective convenings, individual interviews. We canvassed, we knocked on doors, we visited the community. We asked focus groups several questions so that we can understand, what do they love most about living in Cloverdale? What is most challenging about living here? What helps them experience joy? And what cultural wealth are they currently tapping into to achieve positive health? We also conducted forums and we organized community events. So you probably have seen us around. We've been all throughout the following map. If we can go to the next slide, please, we're going to go ahead and show you that this work was really intentional. We worked with a cartographer, our collective met over several meetings, and we asked, where do people gather? Where can we go and ask a lot of these questions, right? So we went to St. Peter Catholic Church and the Cloverdale Performing Arts Center and the Citrus Fair and the Downtown Plaza. We spoke to elders from the Kings Valley Senior Apartments, um members and, and, and clients from Nuestra Comunidad and La Familia Sana. We made calls, we went to homes, we visited, we canvassed. So we did a lot of work. And the vision that we're going to share with you today, it's not something that's coming from, from us, the primary investigators of this project, because this is not about primary investigators. This is about the community sharing a vision with you all. You all creating this vision and then us putting out there, hoping to manifest it and hoping it, hoping it to see it realized. So can we go to the next slide, please? So why is this work important? I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to my colleagues.
As we listened to community members, one of the resounding messages that we were getting over and over is that Nuestra Comunidad Sana, or Our Healthy Community, Community Center, would provide what they consider a building that helps them build their own resilience. And this is why uh community relationships and connections are the cornerstone to a resilient and thriving community. Those bonds created, they create a network of mutual support. they create a network of mutual support, trust, and solidarity. Now, when this is going to become super vital is during times of disaster or emergency. So, what the community expressed is that when community members know each other, they're more likely to work together and take care of each other during those disaster times. As we've learned in the past, during those critical moments, there are just not enough resources and responders, and this place is a place where relationships could grow, where knowledge can get passed on, where we can hold trainings, but really provide a space for that glue to take place. And so, this would help ensure the safety and well-being of all community members. Moreover, these connections could lead to sharing of vital information, local knowledge, and resources, which again, are critical to building resilience. An inclusive and welcoming community center serves as a hub, a hub, can you imagine that? Here in Cloverdale, a hub where during blue-sky days, you can go take knitting, whatever, hot yoga, not my thing, but, you know, but we can do all those things, but also a hub that during disaster times, people know they can get help or information. It provides a space for people to forge relationships, share experiences, and learn from one another, fostering the sense of belonging and cohesion that will transcend any differences. It also becomes more than just a physical space, it becomes a symbol of unity and community. And we feel that's just one of the things that we're hearing, and it's a great benefit for everybody here in Cloverdale.
All right, so I'm going to share the vision. Again, we conducted many interviews, and so, as I read this vision, I'd like for you to just imagine the abuelitas, the elders, the children that we spoke to, the young adults, the teens, everyone that we talked to. And again, different settings, different days, starting March. And right now, we've gone out to the community, and we've said, this is what we found. Is this vision correct? Does this really align? And everybody said thumbs up. This is exactly what we're looking for. So, if we can go to the next slide, I'm going to go ahead and share this vision. And again, I know that some of our guests have already left, but they were here, they're passionate about this vision, and they can't wait to roll up their sleeves and get started. So, what we did, what our research team at On the Margins with the collective's support, what we did was we ended up collecting and analyzing everything that we heard. We came up with, what are the most common verbs that are coming out, the adjectives, the nouns? And based on all of that data that emerged, we came up with this vision. A colorful mural, agave, and native plants welcome you to Nuestra Comunidad Sana, our healthy community. You walk into this brand-new wellness center. Bilingual, bicultural volunteers greet you and invite you on a tour of the facility. Can you picture that? Immediately, you're presented with a wide variety of local art, from talented creatives from different backgrounds, ages, and abilities, highlighting the vibrant life and cultural heritage of Cloverdale's beautiful, diverse communities. The art on the wall celebrates past, present, and future generations. Next slide, please. Are you there? Can you see it? Can you feel it? You see multigenerational families interacting with crafts, enjoying music and eating together. You hear families talking to each other about the intramural sports that they have signed up for. The volunteer asks you if you can hear the loud and bustling sound in the background. She said, "Today's class is zumba, tomorrow's class is folclorico." On one corner is an education center and community library where free English and Spanish classes, culinary lessons, computer skills, and more are available at no cost. You see a banner that invites you to free wellness clinic facilitated by community health workers, cultural workers, healers, and behavioral health practitioners. And there is also a small market where guests can purchase meals and drinks. Next slide. On the opposite corner is a daycare and teen center where children can learn, receive tutoring, lead, and enjoy the center's resources. And in the final sector of the tour, you notice folks who are swimming in the pool, where elders, adults, and children are relaxing and experiencing pure joy. This work is intergenerational, this work is cross-racial, it is about joy, it is about inclusion, and it is about radical love. And we want to ask you to please join us. I'm here, our collective is here, representing over 181 folks that we spoke to, the community, and we sat down, and it was, you know, full of richness and full of stories. If we can go to the next slide, please? So, how is this different?
So, I want to go there now. But I know a lot of you are thinking, well, Alexander Valley Healthcare is building a health and wellness center. There you go. And we've come to you and told you about how it's going to be a community resilience center, potentially. All of this has been driven by these conversations that we've been having with this collaborative, this collective. This is where we have, I have sat in meetings, taken back to our E.D. Debbie, CEO Debbie, and we have said, we can learn from this. What can we put in our medical wellness facility that is going to be driven by these conversations? And there's been so much learning and so much important and valuable information shared. That being said, we are a medical facility, and while we know now that we can open up our spaces downstairs for computer classes, for learning, for ESL, for potentially nutrition classes, we can do many of these things. We cannot be, as a health and wellness center, the center that this community needs in which to gather. So, that's why it's been such a fabulous interaction for us, a great conversation to be a part of, and we will bring what we can to this, but there needs to be so much more.
Thank you so much. Once again, we invite you to consider and think about resources that might already exist and ways that in the future, you might find resources to help realize this dream. Thank you so much.
Great presentation, I appreciate it. And if questions come up, whoever feels they can answer them best, please come back. Take it to the dius, who wants to go first?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had the opportunity last week, I believe it was, to meet with Jade and with Kim. So, I've seen this program before. I think it's a wonderful idea. The question is now, how does this get implemented? So, most of my questions have been answered, and Jade and Kim, I think you know what my concerns are. So, you know, I'm here to work with you, and we'll see what we can do putting our collective heads together. Thank you.
Thank you, that was an excellent presentation, and I'm kind of with the vice mayor on this. I would love to see this get implemented, and I would love to sit down and talk to some of you folks a little more and maybe get my questions answered, but I think it's a great idea. And I would love to sit down, and by all means, reach out to me, or I'll reach out to you, and we can do that. Thank you very much.
You know, these mics, I swear. Anyway. Thank you, staff, and my fellow council members for monitoring the red and green lights. I got a chance to sit down with Jade and Kim and just, and, you know, dig into the data, and I really appreciate the approach that this is a grassroots effort, that this is deep outreach into the community, and there is definitely a need for this. I mean, I see successful programs like this throughout the county, and some that have been around for a couple of years, and some that are just getting started. And, you know, this is clearly a need. We have pieces of this in different facilities and different organizations, but there definitely seems to be a thirst for a real community center. And every time I go to a meeting at Finley, you know, because they actually have meeting rooms there, where, you know, I attend one particular meeting almost monthly, I'm pretty jealous of the swim center, which is actually undergoing a revitalization this year. It's not even just, it's not even a new one. And then, the classes that I see on the billboards, you know, as I'm walking in, and facilities for, you know, multiple meetings. We certainly aren't going to have anything as splashy and large as the Finley Center, but there's definitely a need for that kind of community gathering center that is intergenerational, and we can support our working families and our senior community as well. And, I mean, I've said it before too, it's like, we're very lucky to have the veterans pool, but at the same time, you know, we really need a community pool where our high school can have competitive swim meets and water polo. There is absolutely no reason that this community, you know, shouldn't go after something that is, that will be that difficult. The example for it is just over in the city of Sonoma, the city partnered with the school district because they couldn't afford a pool on their own. So, when we start looking at some of the local partners that we have in town, we do have opportunities to partner with people so that we're not duplicating efforts. But I really do appreciate that this is, this is something that the community, members of our community of all ages are asking for as a resource, and I take it very seriously. The difficulty always is going to be the price tag on something like this, but I'm really interested in hearing more and coming up with some ways that we can partner with this effort.
I personally think it's a great idea. I grew up with a wonderful community center in San Rafael, California, and I think a community swimming pool would be great for all ages, for swim team, for seniors. I think any place that adds more classes for us to choose from, or more activities, is something that's much needed, and I do think it would bring the community together. So, I think it's a great idea.
I want to start by saying thank you. These are great community leaders that we have here. You guys, I've talked to you guys in the past, all except Danny, haven't met you yet, so hopefully soon. They've always had great ideas, and I love it, and you've made a lot of things come to fruition. I've always been called the canary in the coalmine and a realist, and so, this is where it's time for all of us to put our heads together and find ways to make things happen and see what we can accomplish as a group. I'd be curious to see what some of the other nonprofits in our community have to say and how they support this, and how we can all work together and go from there. Great presentation, beautiful ideas. Anyone else up here first? Okay, I'll open up the public comment. Who would like to go first? Please state your name when you come down.
Courtney Cochran, Board Chair for the Healthcare Foundation, Northern Sonoma County. I just want to express our gratitude for the time this evening and for all of your consideration, and thank you so much to our incredible group of stakeholders here who have participated in this work and who are also here with the community to support us this evening. We really wanted to show our support. Just a couple things, this is really, this work is really terrific, and it's really great to be able to bring this community-led approach into Cloverdale. There are some similar projects that are being initiated a little further south in this region, and this would really be an opportunity for Cloverdale to lead. So, we are so jazzed about this work, and we just, again, appreciate your time, and thank you so much to the Healthcare District as well for the funding for this great work. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Council and staff. Erin Gore. I'm here today as a member of the Healthcare District who did the funding to support this incredible group of stakeholders. As you know, we sold the hospital at the end of 2020 and received some money from Providence for the transaction. And one of the things that, as we were really committed to as the board of elected officials was, how do we continue to improve health outcomes for our communities? Something that's really important to us is that healthcare and health outcomes is not tied to hospitals or clinics. That's part of it, but it's also much more than that. We studied adverse childhood affect syndromes, we studied the Portrait of Sonoma, we studied Cloverdale, Windsor, Healdsburg, we studied our communities, and we really identified through the work of the Healthcare Foundation incredible models that were done around the country to really drive and improve health outcomes of everyone in our community. And we worked with the Healthcare Foundation to put together a proposal to really create this community-led approach, to drive the data, to show what the community needs, to move the needle forward. So, this is incredible work of all of these stakeholders. We're incredibly proud at the district to use our first grant outside of vaccine initiatives and outside of the hospital to deliver this to Cloverdale. And we'd love to be a partner moving forward to talk about how can we support your efforts, and how can we use our influence within Providence, and our influence within the district, and resources available to us to really partner on something incredible here. And then, also, just as an employer in Cloverdale, this would be tremendous for everyone here. So, I look forward to many more conversations, as I think everybody else does, and really hats off to all of you. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi, thank you so much for having us today. My name is Angelique Ramirez. I'm a clinician. I work with La Familia Sana and also with On the Margins. I've been working with a range of clients here in Cloverdale, from children, adults, elders, teenagers, and I've seen the impact that access to mental health services has on not just the individual, but the families as well. I think in opening this wellness center, it'll provide a wider range of services for this community to thrive, dream, and live in dignity. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Council. My name is Addison Pickrell. I am Program and Research Associate at On the Margins, and I had the pleasure of, and I was grateful to work on this project under the supervision of Dani. And what I've learned throughout the past couple of years of working on this project is that being able to work with the community and having the community lead this project has not only made this more of a stronger program, but it's also been a way to build trust, it's been a way to help strengthen this community wellness center overall. And overall, having this community participation and input is the only way that this program will continue to succeed and to continue to grow the way it has. So, I strongly urge everybody to continue to have that community input as we're planning and discussing this in the future, and to be able to create something that everybody can see as their new community center in Cloverdale.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public? All right, seeing none, we'll bring her back to the dius. Any final comments or questions? Thank you, everyone, for your presentation and your time. We really appreciate it, and we'll see where it goes from here.
Oh, just my comment, what from staff would be the next step as far as continuing the conversation?
We'll keep our conversation with Jade. We see her a lot out at Plank, but we could...
Everything happens at Plank, basically.
We could put this as a standing item on one of the subcommittees if you choose to take that...
I'd like to see that on Finance, Admin, and Police, at least for the time being, and if something else is more appropriate, we can move it at that time.
Something like that.
Or Sustainability Committee as well.
Or Planning and Sustainability. So, Acting City Manager Thompson, what is your opinion? Just put you on the spot once.
I think either one would be fine. We can go, maybe we should go with the Planning and Sustainability.
Planning and Sustainability? I get it either way, so, you know.
I get to help you, so that'll be good.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Perfect. There you go, so that's where it'll land on the subcommittee, so thank you. Do we need a break? All right, well, let's take a five-minute break, starting at 7:26. All right, back in session at 7:33. Moving on to the H Consent Calendar. All items under Consent Calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any item, I'm sorry, any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Are there any items that we want to pull?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Is there anyone in the audience that they're not moving, so, all right, so we have a first and second.
All right, I got the first two.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Bagby and then Vice Mayor Walter.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Thank you, passes 5-0. Let's see, what else do we have left? Subcommittee reports, how do you like that, we're already there. Did I get, we got everything, making sure, you see everything? A lot of jumping around.
Technically, we have public hearings, none, item I, none.
Yeah, there, there were none, so.
Item K.
Okay, moving on, Subcommittee Reports, Finance, Admin, and Police. Councilmember Bagby. All right, our next meeting is scheduled for November 6th, and it looks like we have a new item on it. Homelessness Community Advisory Group?
Time, it's going to be determined in 2024, last one was canceled.
City and School Subcommittee, next meeting is scheduled for next week. Public Works and Facilities?
Next meeting, go ahead. Oh, next meeting is October 24th.
Any reports other than the written report by Councilmember Bagby? Anything anyone... I'd like to report that we did have a press release with the county and Ag and Open Space regarding the Leida property, and it went really well. The Press Democrat has a very well-written article.
Front page above the fold. Is it bad?
We'll take it.
I had the opportunity to attend, and I just want to give out a big thanks to Hector and Kevin for the, for the job that they did on Saturday, and of course, continuing to praise Councilmember Bagby for her hard work in getting this thing to the, to the city, because I know without that, we probably wouldn't have it. So, thank you, Councilmember Bagby.
It's an honor to be there and glimpse a piece of the future, which is actually pretty fun, just with Supervisor Gore having brought his son Jacob, and it really, it was like, it turned it from just a, oh, let's show up on Saturday morning and take pictures with the Press Democrat, oh my gosh, how's this going to go? And it turned it into such a fun event and a glimpse into what the future of when kids his age get to be on that property legally, legally for the first time, because I know, you know, kids throughout Cloverdale have been trapping through that, that land. I've, I've been hearing, I feel like I've been taking people's confessions, like, you know, I've actually walked out there, you know, and I know I wasn't supposed to, I was like, you know, you were trespassing, and you're, you're very fortunate, so, but, but seeing it through Jake's eyes and watching him climb trees and catch lizards was just, that's what, that's what was so satisfying, is kind of just seeing that kids for generations to come are going to be able to enjoy this property, because there just is, we're just really parks poor in North County. We have beautiful views of hillsides that we don't have a lot of access to. So, yeah, I'm just looking forward to it. I think it's going to be just the gem in the crown of what will eventually be a wonderful Parks Program. And as we all said, it's like, well, the easy part's done, now Hector's got to manage it, so. And Hector and his team, and I know that they're, they're up for it, but I just can't wait until residents of Cloverdale and visitors get a chance to experience the, the beauty of this hillside, so it was just really an honor to be out there.
Looking to open it up in about a year, approximately.
If we're lucky, but that's, that's ambitious.
That's very ambitious.
But I also think that because it's such an accessible piece of property, it's unlike, unlike Porterfield Creek, which is very steep and had a lot of trails challenges, this already has some really nice access roads that just kind of need to be cleaned up, and the Trails Council's going to get out there and build us some wonderful trails and, and create some great access, but it's just, because of the nature of the property, once you're up in it, it's already pretty flat and there's, you get up to a level where there's a meadow, and it's just so much more accessible than a property of equal size at the south end of town, so, yeah, it's really going to be a wonderful asset for the community and makes it, it makes all the other stuff that we do, when you get to be part of something like that, it makes all the other stuff that you do a little more palatable.
And it is beyond great for our community, because it's going to protect and preserve our environment, allow people to have the nature to, to take part in. Like you said, watching Jacob run around instantly, as soon as we hit the gate, runs up there and starts catching lizards and climbing trees and throwing rocks, and it was just, it was really cool to see, and it's what we like. And I look at it as, not only that, but it's, it's protecting and preserving our community to keep the houses out of the hills, to keep that open to, to our community and keep the, our size down a little bit, I'd say, to keep our small-town aspect that we have. But I also look at it as a financial way to fund our city is with the parks and recreation and the bike trails and things that we can create here as a destination. And it's nice to see that our council has the same overarching goals here. We might get there a different way with each other, but however, we have the same big goals for Cloverdale, and that's to keep it a great small town and a destination versus trying to create what other cities are trying to create right now. I, I spoke with Supervisor Gore and Ag and Open Space, and they're like, don't take your foot off the gas, find us the next property, let's go. And that's what we're doing, we're already in talks with different property owners, different facilities, different ways to make the entire west side part of Ag and Open Space and the complete east side with bike trails going all the way out to the airport. So I look forward to seeing everything that we can accomplish for our community.
Just as far as like, you know, future agenda items that I'm going to want to see to, we can, we even kind of move, can we transition into future agenda items right now, is that okay?
We can do that, and then we can go back, that's okay.
Yeah, just, where, where this is concerned, I mean, because we've closed and we can talk about it publicly for the first time, I just, speaking of keeping our, our, our foot on the, the gas where this is concerned and staying on top of this, the active transportation plan is a part, a part of the strategy, and also the, the economic development studies that the consultants who are doing the Great Road Trail, they, they've already done a lot of the heavy lifting, they've looked at, once the Great Road Trail is up and running, the economic impact to each of the cities from Cloverdale all the way to Humboldt Bay. And so I would like to start pulling some of that data into our economic development planning, our parks planning, our ridge-to-ridge, ridge-to-river plan, maybe firm up some items and the, the community development director can bring to, maybe Planning and Sustainability or bring, be part of the Planning Commission or City Council to, you know, really start preparing for these projects that are, they're happening, they're happening now, and we've got a, we're in a position where we have such little discretionary fund from our general fund, we really have to stack these benefits and stack these projects and use our, maximize our local match for these grant applications, so I'd like to start strategizing about that if we can.
The future agenda items while we're still here.
I'd just like to bring into the conversation that same thing as, as these are, I'd love to see everybody keep their foot on the gas, let's, let's see what we can do, but we also got to realize that right now, three people are not going to be able to maintain what they've got going on right now. Porterfield Creek, seven L and L districts, five parks, and now Leida Ranch, it's not realistic. So what needs to be brought into the conversation is, hey, we're going to need to hire either some temporary, part-time, or even some full-time employees, and we're going to have to have them, because these, their workload is not even sustainable right now. And if you drive around town, there's, there's things around town right now, L and L districts are faltering, you look at them and I'm, it's just complaint after complaint. Yes, it can be maintained, but we're spread so thin that we're really going to need to get some people in here to make this work, make this whole strategy come together.
So do you see that as a future agenda item?
I do, I see it.
For like Public Works?
Public Works and, and talk about the org chart and see what we can do and maybe...
First and then Finance after?
Exactly.
Well, and it's also, you know, the issue always comes down to the tax base, so how do we come up with some improvements to our, building our tax base and revenue options?
It'll probably, it'll probably end up on both of the subcommittees.
Yeah.
So let's, let's bring that as a future agenda item for a subcommittee.
Mayor, for the, for the record of it, just so I'm clear with the future agenda items, we have a commemorative Pearl Harbor flag to the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee, the garbage cans near the high school to the Public Works and Facilities Subcommittee. No, we do also have a joint meeting with the school district coming up, I don't know if you'd want to put that in there, if it's involving their property or not.
What was that last, I'm sorry?
Well, the garbage cans near the high school, since it has to do with that, would you want it to, or just...
Uh, let's put that on the school Subcommittee, because they might be able to help out with that.
That's what I was thinking, and that agenda goes out.
And with the flag one, I have a question, because we have an ordinance that does, it policy, it does not go on a Subcommittee, it would have to come back to us, because our policy states we make the decision on which flags are flown, correct?
Okay.
So that one would go to, back to council as an agenda item, right?
And then we got Nuestra Community Dodd with our project, what Subcommittee would you like that to go to?
Planning and Sustainability.
Sustainability. Then the SCTA, Register River, Great Red Road Trail, the Economic Development Plan going to Planning and Sustainability as a committee?
Yes.
Park Staff to Public Works and Facilities and Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee. Does that capture everything? Perfect, thank you.
Nailed it. Any comments on the...
On the, on the flag policy, we'll take a look at the policy, and we may have to circle back with a requestor, depending on, on the policy, we'll review what the policy says and make sure that it gets to the council in the appropriate way.
Thank you.
Shouldn't it go to a Subcommittee first? Said to bring it back to the full City Council?
We need to take a look at the actual, let, let us review the policy again, because the policy was, again, it's government speech, that, that's how it's, the, the policy's written and comes from the council, but we'll take a look at that to see if the Subcommittee could be a first step.
Okay. No more future agenda items, all right, we'll circle back to the legislative reports, letters of support and opposition. And one, letter of commitment to, for Sonoma County Co-Ad, Sonoma County Community Resilience Centers Network Planning Grant Application to the California Strategic Growth Council CRC Program.
Mayor, this was discussed at the last council meeting, this is just a signed copy for the record.
Thank you. Interim City Manager?
Just a...
I know, I wanted to see his face.
Just real quick, we have a Ferber Park survey out right now, we're trying to gauge what people want to see us do in Ferber Park, so I encourage everyone to, to participate in that. Also, real quick, we have a plant, we're currently recruiting for a Planning Commissioner, Commissioner Holbert's, his term is up, and she's indicated she doesn't, she wants to not, not do another term, so you'll see that on our website.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything good for the order? How was your first meeting? We'll get you your own mic next time, I promise.
Can, can we see that she gets the agenda?
Absolutely.
I don't know how to work technology. So, for my first meeting, it wasn't bad, it was just a lot of information after my report, because there's like just so many things that the community wants, wants to budget and everything, I'm just like, oh, okay.
So what will, that was, that nailed it?
Yeah.
We'll make sure that you have the, we'll make sure you have the agenda every, every meeting.
You have two.
And then we'll, ahead of time, so that you can...
She talked about her...
And I'll make sure you have all my contact information, if you have any questions, you can always call any of us, however, I know we're all open to it, but I'm always there for you, all right? All right, with that, meeting adjourned. All right, with that, meeting adjourned, 7:47. Thank you.